Start, let's say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so we have meeting minutes from our very brief April meeting. We just really touched base, introduced John to everyone, and the mayor gave us a quick update on what was happening. Do I have a motion to accept?
Aye.
Vicki, second?
All in favor.
Aye. Alright. This is also a very abbreviated meeting. We only have one thing on the agenda, Bob Capurso is here. He is here representing St. Bridges Church and they're getting ready to install a new sign up at the cemetery. The sign permit is permit O2 of 2023. And the sign is attached that they're looking to put up. Which I thought was a very handsome sign.
I agree.
We're replacing a 100-year-old wrought iron sign that's there. It's way out of date and it needs a lot of upkeep and scraping and painting and stuff. So we thought, you know, why not modernize it and get something that looks good and represents their community.
And still looks aesthetically pleasing, yeah, it's really...
What's it made out of?
Andrew Fink, pardon me?
What's it made out of?
It's made out of composite PVC actually. So it has green inside and then white on the outsides.
Oh, so when they...
You machine through and the green shows there. Andrew Fink has a CNC machine up at their place here. And so I got on CAD and did a general design and then he embellished a little bit and it came out very, very nice.
Yeah, it looks good. Now, is this going on the posts that are up there?
Yes.
And what color will those be painted? Green also?
I have white sleeves that go over them, so they'll be PVC sleeves.
So they'll be the white, so they'll make it...
Yeah, with the nice caps, the finial caps on top.
Oh, lovely.
Yep. And the position of those is kind of touchy because with the expansion of Route 33 over the years, we have grave sites that are right adjacent to the swale that's there. And so what I do is I have to probe down with a drill and a long stainless steel probe to make sure I don't hit anything down there. So where I put that is very specific to not hitting any graves that are up there.
Oh, I see, yeah, that makes sense.
So it's very, very touchy where, you know, where they have to go. And again, there's a lot of graves that are right close to the roads.
It's good positioning though where it is, I think.
Yeah, I think it's good, it's on the left side instead of the right. And we're gonna leave the old sign up. People are nostalgic, they want to leave the old one up.
So the old one's staying?
It's gonna stay.
Okay.
I told people at the church, as long as somebody upcues it, I'm not gonna get up there and scrape and paint every year. But as long as they want to do that and make it look nice, it's fine. If it's not, then next year it comes down.
Yeah.
Is it two-sided or is it one-sided facing the road?
It's one-sided facing the highway and on the backside. Andrew put a scripture reading about the dead and then a little thank you to his relatives that are in that cemetery. So, yeah, quite nice.
Very nice. When do you expect to put this up?
Uh, tomorrow. No, it's gonna be within the next week or so. I got Nora Podlock who's gonna help me put the posts and put the sign up, so.
Does anybody have any questions on that? I think it's well with... I agree.
Okay.
I agree. Not lit, it's just gonna be...
Nope, nope, just there, yep.
Terrific.
Yep.
Alright, wow, that was fast, Bob.
Yeah, thank you.
You're the easiest sign permit we've ever had.
I tried, I tried, but thank you very much.
Uh, do I have a motion to accept the sign permit for St. Bridges Church? Kate?
Yes.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, congratulations.
Thanks. Alright, now we can get busy.
I'll send a letter just so you formally have that. A letter will go into the file along with the sign permit, so down the road. I will make a note that the old one's staying up, but if it does become deteriorated, it's going to be taken down.
Very good. And then I'll pass that on to Leroy, because that's where our headquarters is now.
Where do you want me to send this?
Uh, send it to me and then I'll take it to them.
Alright.
Yeah. Otherwise, they won't understand it and it'll get lost in the shuffle.
Okay, so I'll send it to you and then you can just take it on.
Very good.
Fantastic, thank you.
Good night, guys.
You too.
Take care, Joe. See ya.
Okay, wow, that was fast.
That was hard.
I know, we tried to ease your back end, Kate.
Seven oh four.
Uh, Mariscue, oh yes, I'll tell you about this. So this was in our Nikon magazine, I just thought it was kind of interesting. You know, there's been a lot of talk about the 15-minute city or the 15-minute, you know, village.
What does that mean?
That everything is within 15 minutes of where you live. So you can go get your groceries, you get your hair done, you go to the bank.
And it's 15-minute walk, right?
15-minute walk, yes. It's all about walkability, so, interestingly, they spotlighted Perry, the Village of Perry, in the Nikon magazine about them being a 15-minute rural village. So it's kind of a fun read, interesting. There's, it does go on to say that there are some other Western New York, some out here that are 15-minute villages. But it's a nice read about this 15-minute city model, whether you agree or don't agree with the 15-minute model. Some people do, some people don't. It's kind of interesting that Perry has put their name on the map even with Nikon, so, New York Conference of Mayors.
Way to go Perry.
Perry is, Perry is really doing great things. Perry's doing really great things.
Really?
Mm-hmm, they had the Main Street Grant, they just got another revitalization grant a month ago maybe, and I can't remember what exactly it was for, I got an email on it, they got a grant for that. They're in the 15-minute city, they're doing all sorts of things with up at Silver Springs. So yeah, Perry's really, and now they're trying to get more. I know that Letchworth couldn't host the Arts Festival, Arts and Crafts, is that right? And Perry held it, you were there.
I know a little about the backstory of that.
Yeah.
Because my secretary's husband is on the Wyoming County Arts Council and oversees the whole shebang. And the Letchworth State Park basically kicked out the Arts Festival. They raised the rates for them to use, to use that, like, you know, how many years has that been going on?
A long time.
Forever. They, I don't know how much, but they jacked the rates way up and then they told them they could only use, they could use less of the area of the park, which seems crazy because that park is so huge. So the Arts Council said, well, you know, got their nose out, like, why are you doing this? And they went and the Village of Perry came to them and said, we have this park, you know, the park in Perry, it has a walking...
It's like downtown, right?
It's downtown, but the park itself has, now, you know, with the kids, there's a couple of ball fields and there's tennis courts. But on this one part of it, it has like a walking, like a track, kind of like the track in our park, but like times four the size. And they put the whole Arts and Crafts thing right there around that, like, circle. And people, it's been a huge hit and they, I don't think they're ever going back to Letchworth. So Letchworth tried, like, I don't know, Letchworth lost it.
So they lost it and now Perry has it. And then they do the chalk drawing too, like, they have all sorts of different events there.
Yep, that's a different part of the, that's in the summer, I think, like the Crafts thing.
Aren't you telling us in the fall?
It's October, it's the other holiday, Columbus Day.
Columbus Day?
It's always Columbus Day weekend.
Interesting.
But it seems like, what's in the lot about there? Because Letchworth, the Village of Letchworth is doing cute things with their downtown. Mount Morris has done cute things with their downtown.
Mount Morris looks great, they do.
Perry's working, like, that whole area down there has really been moving and shaking in terms of their little villages.
Well, the park is a big draw, I mean, that's a fabulous park, Letchworth Park.
Yeah.
I mean, I take people there all the time and they're like, wow.
I can't believe this is here!
Yeah.
What is it, the Grand Canyon of the East?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I feel like Perry kind of jump-started it. I mean, I remember when we, you know, the local government workshops? One of the first ones I went to, which must have been like, I mean, it has to have been a decade now, was the Village of Perry's mayor, who is also an architect, was talking about the Main Street Grants. You might have even been at that one, Vicki, were you at that one, maybe? But, um, yeah, he was, he was doing one of the sessions on what they had started to do there. And then it's just, I mean, you hear about Perry getting grants all the time.
Honestly, I've not driven through downtown Perry in a really long time, like, I feel like I should.
I know.
I haven't driven the Main Street in a really long time.
I didn't realize they had a big park like that.
The park is fantastic.
Is it?
And it's right in the village, like, it's not out, it's on the one end of the village.
Does it have the wrought iron where you walk into it?
No.
Is that a different spa?
I just don't, I'm always going down like Perry Road to get places and...
Yeah.
I think that's probably a different...
And who doesn't like the Silver Lake Drive-In? I mean, come on!
It is very, it's very nostalgic, actually.
I mean, come on, let's not just like with the trickle grill.
You know, it's a nostalgic area.
They have a splash park.
Do they, like Attica?
I'd go to Perry and check it out.
Yeah, isn't it the same in their park space?
Yeah, it's just outside of the ring.
Yeah, just...
Yeah, they've done a lot, they really have.
Well, the park committee is working on a new five-year park plan and we actually loved Perry's park plan, the way it's set up, because it's very simple. It's very simple and I don't, sometimes I think when we get into these things, we put too much stuff in and we just need to be simpler. So obviously they're working hard on their parks too, it sounds like. Their park plan was very easy to read, it's only like 18 pages long.
Really?
Mm-hmm. It's very simple, but it has everything in it. And it was done recently.
So now survey on the parks, by the way, was it two months ago that came through with our...
There was, there was a Hickory Park survey and then the remaining parks.
Yeah, and the remain, I thought it was a great survey. Did you guys get a lot of responses?
We got 40 on the remaining parks and over 100 on Hickory Park.
Only 40 on the remaining parks?
Mm-hmm, but it was the same common thread.
Yeah.
Common thread that people want landscaping.
They want a pretty place to go.
They do, that's pretty much it. They want a pretty place to walk and when they walk through the parks, they want it to look nice. Was the general consensus, paving the walking path from the track to into Sage was a big thing. Some more landscaping up at Ward, which the mayor can speak to that, but I think that's on the agenda going into next fiscal year, so.
Stuff doesn't grow there, you know that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it was a highway, you see, it's like a highway.
It's like gravel underneath it, right?
It killed trees, it killed like two trees.
Yeah, the Christmas trees.
So they have to do pox or boxes or something.
We're gonna have to...
You could do that.
We're gonna excavate around it, our excavator, bring in a lot of topsoil.
Hopefully it'll work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just know it's a kill...
We'll know when we're digging there what it...
What was there, yeah.
Yeah.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, so that, we, but we got enough to get a feeling.
How many households are there, like, when you signed the survey, how many, approximately how many are going out?
So for the village, there's approximately 675 electric accounts. So that includes renters and businesses. There are 432 sewer bills, which are parcels. But again, that includes, you know, businesses, the industrial up here. So, I mean, households, not rentals, I'd say you're probably looking at 400-ish.
So you got 10% back then on the survey, even the second survey?
It's not bad in terms of survey results.
Yeah.
I was disappointed with a third back for the Hickory Park. I was really hoping there was gonna be a...
I, yeah.
A community coming together and saying, this is what we want to do. Most people, they just seem worried.
What did they, what was the main response on that one?
Number one thing that people wanted done was the track resurfaced. There's a, the second thing that people want is more community events. So they want to feel like a community. The third one was landscaping. And then I think, you know, it starts in benches and things of that nature.
Playground, there was a bunch of...
Yeah, the back part, we're gonna do a play...
Where the pavilion is?
Yes, yeah, a nature-themed down-the-road, you know, pieces. Not like an actual playground in playground mulch, but different pieces that kids can use back there, so.
And then there was a range, the surprising thing for me was there was a range between a large group of people that said, the park is very well-maintained and it looks great, and then there was a few that said the complete opposite.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that surprised me, because how can you find fault with a bunch of nature? You can go up there and find sticks on the ground, but there's not like garbage all over the place.
That is true, Vicki, that is true.
We did have a call in the office this week, somebody from Pavilion said that he was in the park with his kids and he thought the playground looked gorgeous, they did a nice job painting and he was really impressive.
Nice.
Nice.
I know, we don't get those phone calls around here.
I've never had anything but good experiences in that park.
I know.
And to be honest with you, even the kids in the back of Pavilion smoking back there, they're very pleasant. When I ride my bike here and I say hello, they're like, you know, occasionally you get that, like, towards, you know, I like to rock my bike like almost at dark. Honestly, everyone is really nice at that. I've never had, and there's a couple of times where some kind of jerky kids play basketball, but otherwise, you know, I think everyone's been really awesome in that park.
I agree, everybody said they felt very safe.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, a lot of people wanted a little more lighting, so that's something that's, we're doing a phased approach with the project, which is community-funded and grant-funded and we're doing a phased approach and lighting is in, lighting and landscaping is like our next thing we're gonna tackle.
Lighting is so tricky, because you gotta hit that sweet spot of making something more accessible, but not...
Glaring.
Glaring and killing the neighbors around the park.
Yeah.
That sweet spot in the middle is sometimes harder.
I think what we're looking at is gonna hit that sweet spot.
I agree.
Because the lights that are there, they're up high, they're very bright. We're gonna bring them down, make more of them, but the wattage is gonna be lowered. They're not, they're not gonna be as bright.
Yeah, it's gonna be colonial lighting on the interior and then down the McKenzie Street path. The linemen laid the electric for that before the path got paved.
Oh, nice, that was great.
Yeah, down the future. Yeah, yeah, just enough to make it aesthetic, like aesthetically pleasing.
It's not gonna be utilitarian light, it's gonna be ambiance light.
It's mood light for the park, yes.
I love that, I think that's great, seriously, that's great.
Yeah, so...
I can imagine walking in the snow at night would be pretty.
It would be pretty and it's nice because, you know, I've always said since they started plowing it, the track, it's so nice because a lot of times there's not a lot of places to walk, but our sidewalks are plowed and the park is plowed. So you can walk in the park, walk your pet, walk your kids, get out of the house, you know? Winter's just so dull sometimes, it would be really pretty, be really pretty. So we have, we have some big dreams, but we're gonna...
Are there grants out there that go after?
Yeah, yeah. The mayor can actually speak to the grant that...
Yeah, they just came out yesterday, the CFA grant, who's just announced yesterday. That needs to be submitted by July 28th. So we have Clark Patterson, we've got a grant, we got $5,000 from Genesee County. It was first come, first served, they put $50,000 in their budget. So any of the municipalities that wanted to obtain that money for a grant writer, it was first come, first served. So we got right in on that, we got that and Clark Patterson's gonna write up a grant horse for the park. So they should be starting that now. Like I say, it just came out yesterday, I just got the email. So I'll touch base with them and get the ball rolling on that. And that'll be, that's a matching grant, so that is gonna be up to the board how much money we want to allocate, if they want to allocate. I would think they would, to some degree anyways. Like I said, it's a 50-50 match, so we'll see where we're at and obtain, you know, hopefully get a grant for the, a lot of the work to be done in the park. The, we've talked about the park, we're happy to say they got paved today, the whole trail got paved today.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, looks beautiful, looks beautiful.
It is gorgeous.
The concrete's been poured all around with the old bathrooms that were redoing. Got a new sidewalk area around it, ADA compliant, so a wheelchair can go up in there and... Putting a water fountain, that is in now, but we've got a new water fountain that we're gonna be putting on the side of the building.
Yep, bottle filler.
Everything is motion-sensored, ADA compliant. The guys are saying, boy, that toilet paper roll's gotta be so low off the floor. If that's what ADA compliance is, you know, that's where it's gotta be, so it's really like 15 inches off the floor or something. But, you know, everything in there is ADA compliant. Toilets are flush themselves, the sinks, put your hand under it, you know, everything's, got hand dryers in there now with little paper towels. Those have been installed, the handrails in the bathrooms are installed. So they're moving along on that next week and they'll be starting the outside of the building with their rock, ledge rock going around, coming up about three feet around the perimeter of it. And then from there up, it's got a vinyl siding, it's not a siding like a, you know, horizontal, it's more vertical. So it's gonna look really nice. And guys are trucking in topsoil tomorrow, we trucked in some yesterday to fill along the gaps, along the blacktop that was paved today, try to eliminate people twisting their ankles, you know? But we've had that filled in before Park Day, so they're gonna be hauling that in tomorrow. And the town's been very good to us, letting us store it underneath their salt shed to keep it dry. So we'll be doing that and getting the park ready for Park Day.
Yeah, that's great. There's some little finishing touches that we're, we're working hard to get done too before Park Days. The pavilions are gonna be painted a different color.
When did you get on that?
I think Joe got a Genesee County Justice.
I have a Genesee Justice worker, supposed to be contacting me, couldn't work this week, he said he could do it next week. So if he comes through, we'll put him to work on those. And if not, then myself and whoever wants to help, we'll get the rollers and brushes and get them done.
Yep, we're going from red to dark brown, like a brown, to, again, be aesthetically pleasing to the trees and whatnot. Playground mulch, new brand new playground mulch, Miracle Grove donated it all. So that's coming.
Cause I haven't seen it yet.
It's coming.
It is, it's not here, but it's where we have to go pick it up.
Yeah, yeah. So that's happening. Courtney did verify today that Grippo Asphalt is sealing at least the basketball courts before Park Days for the tournament. And they'll be adding two four-square courts in there also. We just have to get him the green paint, he has all the rest of the colors, but he doesn't have the bicycle green, so we have to do that. And then, you know, if we have time, we'll move the library in the woods.
We'll move it.
We're gonna move the library in the woods, just up a little bit, up the hill, so it's not in the divot and it doesn't get flooded, we wanna try to save that. I was shocked at how many books people have put in and taken out, because I went up there and took some books from down here up there and kind of organized it and I went back a couple of days later, because I had a few more books and I, people had come, it's so great. So we'll, we'll be moving that and then there's sponsorship opportunities for benches. So there'll be a new four-foot bench there on a concrete pad at some point in time.
Next to the library?
Next to the library, like the one on the picture, just four feet. So, and that, you know, somebody can sponsor that for $1,000 and then the other benches are $1,200 for a sponsorship. We have six available for the park. They'll all be on concrete pads secured, but a lot of them are around the walking track on the outside, where the life trail is, in between the life trail facing into the park. So you'd be, you know, sitting and looking onto the park, which we think is nice, so.
And we're also ordering trees put around.
Oh, yeah, the trees.
Through a grant through Nite, but they buy one, get one free, so we're gonna take advantage of that.
Where you putting those in?
Uh, around the...
The outside of the rain?
Of the walking trail.
Actually, the inside, inside back.
Oh, cool.
So it kind of makes a...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
How many trees you putting in?
What did you say, a dozen, was it?
I think we said 10 or 12 of the same species, so that, you know, you have the big evergreens there, so you'll walk and it'll be a nice... We didn't want to close up the entrance to the park or where the life trail stuff is. You know, we may add a couple of trees there, but nothing, we don't wanna, we want you to be able to see into the park. That was our vision. And then the walking trail signs, we ordered, so those will go up, so everyone knows. And then we ordered five more, five more yesterday.
I didn't know that three laps was a mile, thank you.
Yeah, see?
This is news to me. I had no idea that this was the length of the walking trail.
We ordered signs yesterday, one says, will be posted by the basketball courts, it says basketball court closes at nine. There also, I didn't know this, that you can get borrow pickleball equipment from the library, I had no idea. So it's gonna say pickleball, you know, court, you know, whatever, paddles, whatever they're called, are available at the library. We have a sign for the four-square courts and two signs that say this area under video surveillance. One will go by the bathrooms and then another one will go somewhere. They'll all be on posts, which will match, be stained to match the pavilions.
Yeah, stop when we put those signs up.
Yes. We wanted them to look nice, so, you know. These signs, these were only $30, $35 on Amazon, believe it or not.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
I think they look great.
I know, don't they?
Yes.
And then we're gonna be redoing that, there's a, it's like an activity board in the front by the playground. We're going to be making that into a sponsorship board. So it'll be repainted, maybe re-roofed, we're gonna put plexi on it and then there'll be sponsors, when people sponsor, there'll be sponsorship plaques. We're working with Joe's Pro Shop and Batavia, they'll do all of our plaques, so.
I think you guys have done a lot in a very short period of time. Hats off. You guys have done a lot of work.
Yeah, hey, yeah, the group's a great group. Fun, fun group.
Wow. Poofing and shaking the Hickory Park.
Yes, so come visit us at the Park Festival, we have a booth.
You have a booth, the committee has a booth?
Yes.
You should have the first booth, you should have the front booth. Thanks to the committee, the BBC has that. Are you in that booth, Vicki?
I am for a couple hours. So, so yeah, we'll be there, we're actually raffling off the Sage Pavilion. Two friends at Burgen Parks is raising money to go to the Hickory Park Project and I donated a dollar and I think something else.
Great.
Yeah.
There's open slots?
There are, there are, so yeah, that's what, that's really a lot that's been happening. Not much else, just generally around the village, a lot of, a lot of people just aren't mowing the grass and, you know, tis the season. So, you know, our code officer's been out chasing people down to get the mower out. I see that TK Flooring is putting things in there.
There's been work going on in there.
So maybe we'll see TK Flooring open, that'd be fantastic before the year's is up. Yeah, that'd be great.
They've been working in there.
Mm-hmm. Rolf and Rosie's came in yesterday and I do have to get back to them, I didn't have a chance today. He is interested in putting the, what's the lighting, the light fixtures that...
The gooseneck lighting?
Yeah, gooseneck lighting on Rolf and Rosie's, solar. And you wouldn't see the solar, it's just a little thing, so I was, I was excited about that. I have to look up in the zoning law though to see for the exterior if he needs to come and see the planning board, because it's... I have to look up in the zoning law though, to see for the exterior if he needs to come and see the planning board, because it's a downtown business. So I just didn't have a chance to look that up, but I will. But kudos to Mike, that would be fantastic. They look great. Yeah, not much else happening. Really, it's been quiet.
The school boards gave Ralph and Rosy's an award proclamation last night for all they do for the, for the kids at the school.
Oh, that's nice. They do a lot for the kids.
It was nice to see.
We had the seventh graders here for Community Action Day. They worked really hard.
Did you put them to work?
Oh, my goodness.
Child labor, gotta use it.
They did, they worked hard, and it was pouring when they got here.
Oh, no.
So everything, they bagged up wet leaves and wet knots and, vault was wet, everything was wet, but they were troopers. They were a good group. They were a good group. Yeah, it was cold. It was cold that day. But we had our Urban Day celebration and we planted a hickory tree in Hickory Park and the kids shoveled all the dirt in, and it's cute. So.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
Hickory trees in.
Yeah, there's one, two, six, six hickory trees up there. Yep, yep.
Lucky to get them, because usually you can't get them through the nurseries around here.
Yeah. Yep.
I have hickory nuts.
Yeah. So, so yeah, what's happening.
I think hickory nuts shells.
Did you guys even notice about, and I know it's not village business, but the, you brought the library. The shift, like, I wasn't sure, when is that vote, or when is that?
Vicky, Vicky? Right now, there are petitions, well, something happened, I don't know, but anyhow, there are petitions out to get it on the ballot.
Okay.
To, for community funding.
How do they get around the whole, the school district being over county lines?
It's not a school district based library. It's a town based library.
Well, I know that, but isn't the funding gonna be connected to the school district?
Nothing to do with the school district.
Okay.
It's just the towns.
Okay.
Right now, the town, Virgin and
So they want it differently than what they were trying to do a couple years ago?
Well, the thing is, well, I don't know what they were doing two, a couple years ago, but the thing is, you know, the funding isn't consistent.
Yeah.
So they're looking to get a source of consistent funding.
So, if I'm understanding correctly from what I was told, so that would be a line item on our town taxes. And it should be offset by a reduction in the town taxes.
Well, that's up to the town board.
Right. Right. Do you, do, is there a budget that they're looking for?
Yes. I don't remember exactly how much it is, to tell you the truth. Once, once it's on the ballot, there will be public hearings.
Okay.
Public meetings. Because if it's not on the ballot, then, you know.
And that would be in November?
It'd be the November election. It'd be like a proposition on the back, you know.
Oh, so, so, so they're just trying to get it on the ballot?
Right.
In November? That wasn't clear to me, like, so far in advance, I was like, is this, you know, getting it in May, like
Right, it's to get on, right now, we have to get the proposal on the ballot.
And is it a certain amount of signatures to get it on the ballot?
Yes. I think it's two hundred in Virgin and a hundred in Byron, I'm not sure.
By when? June?
Who would we contact to be able to sign that? Is the lady gonna come around?
Well, yeah, I, I, this weekend I was out at the library, hanging out at the library.
Oh, yeah, that's right, you were sitting behind the library. I went in the front door.
Right, for some reason you can't do it in the library, which I totally don't understand.
You can't get signatures for the
Sometimes. But I could sit outside and fortunately, it was a beautiful day, so.
It was beautiful.
And I, but I could only be in the back or the front, you know, so.
So do you still have, are you still
Did you get some signatures?
I did get some.
Good.
I don't know, something happened with the lawyer last night that I don't know
Oh.
what's going on, so.
The library lawyer?
Well, a new library lawyer.
Okay.
So I, otherwise I would have bought the, I would have bought from the petitions.
Okay.
So everybody can sign, but they told us to stop getting signatures.
Okay.
There's a glitch, there's a glitch.
Oh, those glitches.
I don't know what it was.
Okay, well, that makes more sense to me also.
What?
That, so that it's to get on the ballot, and then once the, once the proposition is on the ballot, then more information is gonna come out.
Then there'll be meetings for the public.
That makes sense to me now too. I didn't really get it when I read what was in there.
Especially with the little card, I didn't completely understand what
What it was.
What it was for, so.
Anything else interesting in the town going on you guys are aware of?
Kinda quiet, yeah.
Park Fest.
Park Festival coming out June tenth.
Man, that's really soon.
It is.
I can't believe we're halfway through, I
Yeah.
It is flying.
More than half.
Flying.
It is flying.
Park Fest, June tenth.
Memorial Day is a parade, you know?
Yep, Memorial Day, nine o'clock, right?
Oh, I have to talk to you about that, yes.
So nine AM, Memorial Day, and they'll go up to the Veterans Memorial, and then they go to Byron?
Usually.
Usually? Usually?
I don't know, I never, I never like
It's an early parade. It's an early parade.
It is early. When my kids marched in, I got up, but it is ni, it is nice to tell you.
For the time those men and women spent just to fight for our country, I will get up and
I, I don't, I never make it here because I grew up in the birthplace of Memorial Day, is my hometown, Waterloo, New York. And they do a massive Memorial Day that my family's volunteered at forever and ever. I mean, it's a massive Memorial Day thing. So yeah, we, we do it up for the veterans.
You know, the PBS, the Buffalo PBS station has this little like filler thing going on right now, talking about the towns and villages of upstate New York. It seems to be very Erie County, Erie County centric, but Waterloo is, they did talk about it.
That's our claim to fame.
Having the bike in the tree.
The bike in the tree is a big deal, so is the scythe in the tree, the scythe, I never say that correctly, scythe? Is it? I don't think it is.
No, it's, it's the long, it's scythe.
It's scythe, I believe. On the, there was this tree where before the guys fought in the, in the, for the state, why can't I Civil war, thank you. He put a scythe in the tree and then he went to war, and the scythe is still in the tree. And, and people come from all over to see the scythe in the tree. I don't kind of get it, but it's a big deal. Bicycle in the tree, or the scythe in the tree.
Interesting, interesting. Yeah, we'll have more banners going up. How many were there, Joe?
Six, six additional.
Six additional hometown hero banners.
Great.
Yeah.
That's great.
So.
Yeah, Virgin's doing great.
Yeah. No news is good news.
Rotten Virgin. Yeah, no news is good news, right? Not a lot of houses for sale anymore. That's all quiet right now.
Twenty-nine Rochester sold in a few days, though.
Which one was twenty-nine Rochester?
Down here, sale pending, like within a week.
Jessica?
Yeah.
Oh, Jessica's here.
Yeah. I mean, still pretty pricey for Virgin. I think it was at one ninety-nine or one ninety-seven.
That's a bargain.
I guess she's got a fair amount of land, but it goes back to
She does, she does. Yeah.
They were working on it.
Oh, did they combine the two plots on the Leroy side?
I do not believe so. I have not gotten any paperwork on that. If they did, I didn't get the paperwork. Because we get that here, so that we know if somebody wants to build something, a lotline there.
Oh, that, oh, that house. Yeah, that, that's a, that's a, it looks big within the square footage. I thought that would have been a massive sized house. It looks so huge in the road.
It's really close.
Yeah, yeah, it's like, for some reason, I'm like, it's a giant house, you know?
Yeah.
Good for them.
Yeah, there'll be a couple up for sale here at some point in time. We've had a couple of residents pass away and sadly.
Is the Dudley House still?
It is pending. It's pending. So I don't know what the holdup is, like getting the transaction, but it is somebody local bought it and is turning it into a one-family again.
Oh, really? Oh, which house is that?
Twenty South Lake, the two, right across from Anna Marie's house.
Oh, okay, the Slate side, yeah, because it's still there, the Slate side, I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't, I think Slate's only in front of Danny Miller's house now.
It used to be in front of that house, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, someone broke, I remember taking them out.
Oh, okay. I guess I never walk on that side.
I never walk on that side either. Yeah, so that's pending, but it, it, it is selling.
And I make it a one-family, that's great.
Yeah. I'm gonna make it a one-family, so I guess that's a lot of work.
That's what I heard.
Yeah.
It is a beautiful house.
It's gorgeous. It's gorgeous, it's a great house.
These two buildings are looking good on North Lake.
Yeah, the one right over the tracks, Gary, our code enforcement officer, said he's so close. So close, he needs a little bit of a building permit extension, but within a month.
Seems like he wrote the entire, like, the entire
It's like a totally new house.
Yeah.
I know.
It's similar, just gonna have to go and build something new.
He said it looks very nice on the inside.
Well, good for that kid. It's a young kid.
It's a young kid, yeah.
Good for him.
Yep, and then the other one, it is coming. It's a big project.
What, by Carol's?
Yeah, by Carol, yeah. Yeah, I saw him working there today, so thank you.
I just never envisioned it was gonna be blue somehow.
I didn't either, but I don't mind it.
No, I think it'll look great, I just, for some reason.
I always thought it, it was white, I don't know.
I know, I was like, it's gonna be blue?
It's because it was white for so long.
Yeah, maybe that's why.
I think people are painting houses white now.
How come, do you think?
Colored, fashion.
Just all fashion.
It's all fashion. It's all of fashion.
Does it look dirty?
Ours always looks dirty.
Yeah.
Mine does too. I wish that I, like, this time we haven't power washed the house yet from winter, it's just, you know, and a couple days ago, they were out doing the field behind the house, and all the dirt was just
Yeah.
flying, and I'm like, oh.
Rolling interior.
Like, my white siding looks now in the back, like by the field, in brown. Until it gets power washed, it looks pretty bad. But at least they, they plowed in the day. Couple years ago, I honestly thought the aliens were coming. I'm not even joking.
There's three tractors.
Like, three o'clock in the morning, and there's nothing back there, right, so it's always dark. Dead asleep, and I pretty know the master brother's in the back of the house. And all of a sudden, the lights come up, and the, it's pitched upwards back there, so the lights come up. And then, you know, massive tractor with big LED lights lights up my bedroom. I'm not kidding, I did think the mothership had arrived. I looked for that split second, like, you know, you wake up and you don't even know where you are and the lights are coming through. Honest to God, like, in two seconds, I thought I may have a heart attack, and I'm like, oh my God, there's a tractor in the backyard. I mean, it was wild. So I appreciate that they did in the daytime this year. I was really happy about that.
They did, they did. The fiery, speaking of over there, the firing pin is rebuilding.
Forty, from my house, looking across the backfield, that was an unbelievable fire.
It was. I, I could see it. We were, we, my sister and I were actually sitting in the back, oh, yes, I could see it from my backyard.
Forty feet in the air.
Yes, yeah, it was big.
It was before there were leaves on the trees.
It was, it was, and it was a nice day, so a lot of people were out. It was beautiful, we were just sitting outside.
It was unbelievable.
Yeah, they've got the mobile firing range now up there, and my understanding is they may be getting another mobile firing range.
Are they moving the firing pin?
They're rebuilding there.
Repairing there, right? There was this rumor going around that it was gonna move to Batavia.
I think they're rebuilding, I think they're already working
Good.
on getting it.
Maybe they'll have a second, maybe the franchise, they have it in their location somewhere or something, it's so popular.
It is so popular. So, yeah, that's, that's happening. That's about it. All right, well, I guess, motion to adjourn?
We adjourn.
All right, Vicky. Nate, all in favor? All right, thanks, everyone.